President's for Mallory, so. The the first topic is ticket sales and discussion. What we got for us there Kyle?
Yeah, making sure my settings are good. So I wanted to talk about ticketing. So the concert tickets are on sale for both the Joe Nichols and the Fleetwood Mac concert. And of course, the first thing that people start calling saying, where can we buy tickets in town?
Yeah.
And I know that's what we've done in the past. I saw like in for the three seconds, it was like nearly a thousand tickets. They got sold locally. Last year, maybe thirty tickets locally got sold. Um, we can print tickets off locally or here at the box office and do it through the ticketing software pretty easily. Um, but for us to generate tickets to do in town is going to take some work still. We'd have to get them made up and all of that. But having that conversation with the ticketing guy, he's he's suggesting to not do that and maybe try to find some other options just because it's going to be better. For tracking and getting all of the data that we want.
QR codes. Let's do that.
And so, but you know, that still means people have to buy e-tickets. And if they really insist on paying cash, then they'll have to come out here to buy them. Well, he had some, he talked really well about this because he does this every day. Of course, he got on a cruise ship on Friday, so he wasn't available to come and talk to you all about it. But said one thing like for businesses that like are using that as an incentive for people to come in, which I'm not sure if that's really what we have. It's more of just like a local option. Um, doing like a discount, like a dollar or a voucher or something like if they scan their code there, they get a dollar off of the ticket or something like that. So there's some options like that we could talk about. But I wanted to just have some time to talk with you all about the hard tickets because you know, last year we really wanted to have those. And if you wanted them, then we would figure out how to make it work.
Part of the problem was last year because everything was so pushed back so late that the tickets didn't get printed till so late. And then we didn't really advertise very much where they were at. So I I mean, the years prior, we always had everything ready to go earlier and we were telling people where they could buy it locally. And I kind of think we are in the same situation this year as a little bit like we were last year and already running a little bit behind. So maybe if we can find a different option.
Well, I think most nowadays, most time when you go to a concert, it's online. Like, yeah, everything is online. You don't get a hard ticket and I just think that we need to put, if they want an actual ticket, then maybe that is something where it's only here. They have to drive out here and get the hard tickets here because
Yeah, like no. And it's fine. Some of the people like, well, you know, there's a fee and then it's an extra three dollars. Like, well, by the time you drive anywhere, you're gonna spend three dollars, but you know, people get
You just don't get hard tickets anymore. Any concert you go to, it's all email.
Yeah. And it's better for the venue because then you have better control. Like, we don't know how many of those tickets had been sold unless we're keeping up to date with them on a regular basis, which is one thing if you have tons of space, but if you're coming up against capacity, that could be an issue. It would really only be an issue for our front of stage area.
I think the hard tickets would be strictly just for the VIP section.
Yeah, yeah. And those aren't even really, I mean, they are, we can do a QR code.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, they can do a lot with the ticketing software. And if you would like, he would be more than happy to talk to us about it. He said he's, he knows this like the back of his hand with it.
So we probably should just kind of get this as rolling as fast as we can, you know, because everybody is asking where, where can we get tickets? How can we get tickets? So
Yeah.
Are they for sale right now?
Oh, they are. Okay.
To the website.
Can you pull that up? Will you pull that up for us?
I think we are supposed to the website, not do hard tickets.
I agree.
And see this year and then go forward.
Yeah.
And if they absolutely want a hard ticket, unfortunately, they need to drive out here and get a hard ticket from the guys. If you can just print, can you print one up? Like, someone comes and says, I want five hard tickets. Is it hard to go, okay, let me print up five hard tickets? Or should you have this pre-done?
Um, no, we do as it goes. They're actually sending us a printer that will print, they can print it out like
So that would be, I think that's the way to go.
Right now, it's a full page piece of paper.
Okay, well, if they buy before June first, they get their three dollars back. There you go.
Right, yeah, we did this early bird discount. And we were really bouncing back and forth on how much to charge for the tickets. And it was like twenty-five or twenty-nine, twenty. How about a solution?
So then we came up with the early bird.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
So if you go to our page, click here, it directs you to our page on e-ticks. And this is the landing page. So this shows both of our concerts, which is really big benefit for us because now hopefully people will double up.
Yeah.
You know, if they're going for the Taken by the Sky Show, they see, oh, I can buy my Joe Nichols tickets now or vice versa. So they come to here and then you go in and like get tickets and then just how many do you want? One of those, get tickets, super simple.
Yeah, that's
I'd also like and print at home or mobile ticket, continue. Email address, payment. Which I'm not going to go through all that. Done.
I think that's, we're, we're going to be able to track the tickets so much more that way.
So, you know, I guess we can see how much pushback we get. I did, I finding the ticketing information for your prior concerts has been very challenging and it's like a whole bunch of wasted time to try to figure it out. But I did see where it appeared like there was about a thousand online tickets for Trace actions and a thousand local tickets. And that was two years ago.
Trace was that way.
But then last year, you know, knowing that it was only the thirty people or so, um, thirty or fifty people, like there's a little bit of a transition in my mind. Like, no, I didn't get them down down last year. A handful of people did.
I think part of that though, is they see like the, in the window, when you pull up to the drive, there it's the poster and they're like, oh, can I get tickets too? But if we push out more advertising online, that we have tickets for sale.
Have the QR code on the posters.
Or have it, yeah.
Yeah.
Or they could be in drag through and just be like, oh, I want to get my ticket right now.
Yeah, exactly.
Way better.
Yeah, agreed.
Um, so he had talked about trying to get, um, fair tickets, fair admission on there because we can put that on at the same time. If people want to buy a season pass when they go and buy their or vice versa, they want to buy their season pass and they go and see that there's concert tickets for sale also. Um, he can do a scannable wristband. So they, and then that would be the tracking. It gets scanned once when they came in and they will count them for the day. And then you would know how many of those season pass holders came in each day.
Yeah.
Um, but it's like, how do you do that with them buying online? So he suggested maybe like a voucher. So they print up a voucher and then they come in.
Can you do something on your phone?
They would actually have to, we'd have to get them the wristband. And so we'll have to have those at the
Oh, voucher, I get it.
Something to actually get people their wristband.
Yeah, but they could have that at the ticket booth when they come in.
Yes.
If it's scannable, you'd think you'd be able to do that on your phone.
Yeah.
No, I mean, getting the actual
Yeah, but instead of the wristband.
Oh, yeah, so they could do that as well.
That's what I mean, instead of a wristband, why wouldn't it just be?
Yeah, that was exact, that was actually what he had first said. He goes, they can just get the code and they can scan it.
The only thing is though, is like elderly people though, do not, they would need a band because seven-year-old grandmas are not going to be
It can print, they're not going to
My grandma's dad, he's my biggest Instagram hype girl.
I, I buy a week pass every year. And I just, that would be way more convenient for me than having to then remember to go, go to the fair office, go to the fair office. I'm terrible about it.
And again, he can, he talks about this stuff so well. Like, I'm asking him, trying to get ready to meet with you guys and discuss it and he's got an answer for it. So Yeah, better numbers, you know, having less options.
Can you also quit camping? Stuff on there, you know, for people that want to So then we could just like, I could buy our wristbands and camping.
That would be awesome at the same time.
The, right now, we have the camping on Eventy because it has all of the information to fill out. No, that's e-ticks through our security company. That's the digital picking. Eventy is what our vendors and everything are through. And there's a lot more data to put in besides just your payment information for, for the camping. But I'm sure we could do it that way, but we're kind of already down that
Can we link the ticket on Eventy?
Or sorry, or vice versa. Yeah.
Versa, so that when people can see.
That is something I can look into.
That'd be awesome.
It's supposed to be nice to be able to get it done in one
It's definitely something that even if it's bought, we can work on, you know, if it's bought on, I mean, it'd be nice to do it once bought earlier, but bought on Eventy that we're issuing those wristbands for the camping.
Yeah.
And so we can have all of those ahead of time. There'll have to be something to coordinate the barcode on the bracelet to the, we were going to talk more about the wristbands when he got back from his, his trip.
Okay, I definitely like the fact though of going online and getting, if you want to get a pass for fair or buy one ticket, that it's all on there. And then if it could be on your phone, you have that option.
And then the scanning and the tracking, like, you know, we sold you know, four thousand dollars in season passes last year. But how many times did those people come to the fair? Did they come once? Did they come every day? Did they come three days?
Yeah, I think that's what's a game changer and we'll have actual real numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, another thing he suggested was like a contest, and I think this was more for admission. Not necessarily the concerts, but to work with like the four H clubs or the high school clubs or really any club. See who could sell the most tickets and give them their own link, like their own QR code or their own link. And track the clubs and maybe we give a prize to whichever club sells the most
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Season passes or something. To that one, pass. We're behind schedule.
Yes, we are.
Always are.
Um, fall events. So there are several things that I wanted to talk to you about. The Challenge of Champions is a, um, bull riding group. Um, you know, we budgeted to do, but host an event like this. And so I wanted to show you their proposal and give you these links for some demos. Um, they have these dates available, October fifth, November second, or November ninth. Um, but there's some different pricing. It really depends on what we want to do. If we want to just do bull riding, it's thirty-two thousand five fifty. If we wanted to add Broncos and add the Jumbotron, which I feel like if you're going to do it, you want to have that. Because nobody knows what the heck's happening without that string going. That's takes it up to forty-one, seven fifty. So we'd have to decide, you know, how much tickets are to break even on something like that. I mean, the circus had, I think, uh, eighteen hundred people, maybe fourteen hundred people. It was hard to tell how many people they had at each show. But between the two shows, there was definitely over three thousand people.
I'm just going to say that circus was actually good. After hearing what everyone said about the last time they came, I was really, but you know, skeptical going into it. And I was like, it's good. My grandkids, their mouths were open the whole time, like amazed by everything. It was actually really good. I, I mean, it was good. And then a lot of people have been commenting on the event that just happened this last time that they wish they would have known about it.
I wish I, I wish I would have known about it.
I would have wished that whole thing.
Got that in my face for you guys. Um, so that forty-one, seven fifty, if we had fifteen hundred people come to it, which, I mean, I don't know, hopefully that may be will come. That's twenty-seven dollars a ticket just to break even on that. And that doesn't include security and anything else we would have to do on our side. That's just to pay them to come.
So real quick, so it'd be twenty-seven dollars per ticket for us. Right, if we are the ones
Assuming fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred attendance.
All I know is that circus, if you didn't pay online.
Yeah.
Holy moly.
Twenty bucks ahead.
It was twenty bucks ahead.
Yeah.
And Stefan, I went online and got for two adults, three kids for thirty-four dollars versus I mean, it would have been over a hundred dollars to get it. So it was worth going online.
Yeah.
But people paid it. There was, I mean, I think they would pay for that.
Yeah, and if we could get sponsorship, um, that's another option. Um, we, I don't see why we couldn't find ten thousand dollars in sponsorships for that pretty easily, but we'd have to work on it. So the sooner we can make a decision on what we're going to do. I haven't gotten any quotes from any other firms. I think that's probably prudent thing to do, but I wanted to kind of gauge with you guys on what your preference was. If you were fine with just bulls flat for the cheap and get it here, or if you would rather go all in and get the
Bronx would be a fun.
Bronx and the screen, the Jumbotron.
Might as well do it all.
Seeing how much other places have charged.
They were just at Tillamook, they charged thirty-five bucks per
Okay, so I don't think that's far off, right?
And something people come. If they couldn't fit any more than that in the
Eight hundred?
They were packed.
Okay.
They, they had some good sponsors too. They had like Warners and who else? They had like a dozen sponsors.
But we have, um, alcohol serving, serving?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, yeah.
Not that I agree, but it's kind of a hand in hand. Yeah, well, people wouldn't know there's an alcohol circus. I'm like, I haven't looked at that.
So that's one of the events. And so we've kind of got a hole placed on several weeks in October right now because I wanted to make sure that we made our network. Um, we also have a different monster truck group, but it's the guy that he wasn't here last year. He's the guy that's always been here doing the ride trucks. He's trying to bring in a monster truck show. He wants to do, um, October eleventh and twelve. I'm going to want a little bit more information on them from who's doing what and making sure they're not anywhere affiliated with that other group.
Yeah.
Um, we had the cast and blast. They were scheduled for the Hood to Coast weekend and they canceled. And so right now that's an open day and it's a prime date. You know, we were considering ideas on what could we possibly make happen? And I haven't talked with any of them yet, but I know that there was some conversation with the carnival folks that said if we were two or three weeks later that they would be available. Maybe we could do a standalone ride weekend. That weekend. I don't know if you guys are open to that or if they're even open to it.
If, if, in my opinion, if they're open to it, I would love just to have a carnival here just, just to get it here.
Just to see how it goes.
I mean, it would be like a weekend, Friday, Saturday, probably I would think more than anything. And, uh, maybe we could get some food carts to come in for these days. So if that's something
Do that with a food cart competition.
Would that be fun?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's something that you, we just said, well, there's a hole here. What do we do? And started kicking around ideas. And you might, I don't know, is it your idea or is it? Yeah.
Probably your idea.
Yeah, probably. Uh, but it's unfortunate the cast and blast. You know, they didn't come last year because the thing season got all filed up. And then this year they were like, it's just really hard for a business right now with the mortgages, the way that it's been. Uh, I'm really trying to get local group to do the mud bogs. You know, they're really interested in it, but they're really holding out wanting to do it outdoors. But even then, we could still talk about some other type of event. If it's motocross or quad racing or something, but maybe we could plan to do in there as well.
Why do they want to do it outdoors? We never have done it outdoors.
They, they want to do side by side. And I think it's so short that by the time they get going, that it's done. But that's what I've been telling is like, you know, there's a lot of
Are you talking to Caleb?
Um, it's the whole crew.
Like Rick's there and all those guys.
Trying to think who else it was.
Is it all the Big River?
Yeah.
People.
They're trying to get Ed involved, but Ed's just
Ed Hiller.
He's just, uh, he's upset about how everything went down in the past.
Twenty years ago. Terrible.
You know, it's so Disgusting.
Uh, you know, I want to have another conversation. And then connected to that, Caleb has offered some in-kind services to help get that K rail so that we could do those events. And so we'd have to talk about what that would look like. I told him the next step is we really need to know some dollar amounts. Like, how much is the rails that we would buy and how much is the trucking worth that he would be offering?
Yeah.
And what he wants to, he's looking, he's looking just to be able to put his sign up, really.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest in some fall activities and like, I will push through with this bull riding and hopefully we can get that on the calendar and we can start working on on sponsorships.
Concert sponsorships.
Yeah, so sent you guys this application. Um, I got some comments from Sarah and Mallory last week and and, um, now we just really want to kind of get everybody's final thoughts on it and move forward. If you guys have something you'd like to see differently.
I, can I invoke my opinion first? Um, so I know I had asked and then I didn't respond. I was kind of, I was waiting. Actually, I was talking to a little bit to Brittany about it because she has so much history in this category.
Yeah.
Um, and the big thing that I am concerned about is the, giving the input of the musical artist. I feel like that could open a bag of worms for us because well, um, like sometimes it doesn't even feel like we're really getting our own input, right? And I just, I just don't know. I just have a bad feeling about that. Um, but if anybody else has any other kind of opinions about it, please let me know.
I'm not in favor of that either because it's such a crap shoot. Like, we got turned down so many times this year. Who we wanted, we didn't even so then we're going to just upset people when they don't get what they want.
Yeah.
Then you're going to have people that say
When ego comes into play.
And there's a lot of that.
And not understanding who.
Yeah.
Like, there's a process that most
Nobody understands.
The county doesn't understand.
So what I kind of envisioned was just like a like a community meeting, like early on September and just saying, hey, what type of music would you like us to look for?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe like, like what type of music we have for the next bear or something like that? Or just no.
I'm not in favor of it either.
I just, I think
To get all of us who are on the same team in the same room. Yeah, and then you invite, um, do a Facebook poll.
Yeah, I could do a poll. That would be awesome. But I, I don't think just offering it to just our sponsors is it that some of our sponsors like are very strongly opinionated and I, I
Like, when you make some people mad twenty years ago, they
Yeah, they don't come back. Um, so I just think it's opening a bag of worms and I, I'm uncomfortable with it. But I think
I think we can inv- involve the community in other ways rather than putting them in a decision-making team. And we have a board and a staffing for a reason.
And we're not saying that they're in a decision-making, but that's what they're going to assume.
Yes.
It's just, I had had some comments from sponsors that they'd be willing to pay more for sponsorship if it was something that they were actually
Yeah.
Okay, but when they don't get their way, then what?
Yeah, that's the part of the problem. It's got to be clear.
So looking at this, I mean, I think it follows a lot of like what we did last year. Um, I know there was some concerns about doing VIP parking for the gold sponsorships, but I think doing two for the people that just sign the check that
Yeah.
It's five thousand dollars. I think that's a good move. Obviously for the platinum and then none for the silver or the bronze. There shouldn't be any parking for them.
Yeah.
Um, but it looks pretty much just like what we did. I'm glad that we're sticking to twenty-one and older. We've had so many problems in the past.
Yes.
With the underage drinking, I think even at twenty-one and older is something we have to do in that VIP tent.
And being diligent, like having the security like we did that last year that was actually
And I don't feel like there was a ton of fuss over it either.
No.
We're way behind schedule here. So are we, are we good with just getting rid of the, the input?
We should also note that we are taking away the radio advertising for the lower sponsorship levels.
Yeah.
I want to note the changes so you guys all are on hold of that.
Really, the problem was we were getting way too long on our commercials. We were listing all of them. I think we can acknowledge them every print way. I mean, we can put them on everything print.
And the website.
In the website. Yeah, and we, in fact, you leave them acknowledged all year long.
Okay, that's what I just want to point out.
This ties into, we also need to be just talking about their sponsorships in general. Uh, I mean, this is a good one because we need to get this out.
I think we should just do the three level buckles, like we've talked about originally.
Yeah.
And what those dollar amounts are, you, you guys throw something at us and we'll see how, you know, let's do it that way.
Okay. Like, you know, the Pacific Tower is asking, like, but how much will they want to be on the boat for? I don't know. So, yeah, we'll do that. And then we have some stuff that we can, we can advertise them on, like the mountain busting.
Yeah, for sure.
The bridge and stuff like that. Okay. Um, Sterling Talent, so these guys are pretty good. They're, um, Babe sent this updated package, which the new flyer is up there for the Fleetwood Mac. It's on the table. It's this like turquoise background. Um, had an original graphics with the laser. We just put up basically to get the ticketing link live. That way they can make a Facebook event and have everything be live and connected on their side. Um, it does seem like people are interested in it. We sold
People are excited.
Yeah, it's fired up on Facebook right now.
Both of them?
Just on the Fleetwood Mac, people are very excited.
Seeing good responses to Joe too.
Yeah.
But I mean, the, right now, the Fleetwood Mac thing is on fire. So
We've sold forty-seven Joe Nichols tickets and twelve Fleetwood Mac tickets.
Good.
That's not bad considering all we've done is to Facebook post.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Um, so we went through these layouts, trying to figure out what would be the best. I thought I'd thrown to you. His opinion was number five. His team, he said it was unanimous, number five. And so that's the one where the right bleacher isn't used. And then we put RT four bleachers on either side. But I think if it's not listed, there are numbers. It's just the
This one says a chip.
It'd be the one that, um
This one?
Looks, yeah, that's right back. Um, and you're, we can, we can work on this as we set it up. And also, as we know, ticket sales, if we sold out at a thousand tickets, we're going to have to have seating for a thousand people. Um, the question, one of the questions is, you know, having round tables on the side, see cocktail tables in the back, but are we going to be putting chairs down in that gray box area? This is really on an eleven by seventeen page. It goes sideways. So that's why it's so small.
So like, what are the, are the prices for the tickets there for anything? So it's first concert, first serve. So why are we, would you want to put chairs in that gray spot? I mean, I wouldn't. I mean, let people dance and
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't have chairs.
I just see people like waiting for the show to start and then, you know, mission. I, I'm with you. If I'm going to a concert, I want to stand.
I stand at every concert. I do not sit.
I don't sit.
I also think it gives permission to people to stand.
Yeah.
Because some people get snarky if they're like, why are you standing?
Get out of my way.
I'm sitting and they're standing. Yeah. For the people who want to sit can sit.
So I definitely think leaving that open and letting it be standing room and then having those to meet.
I agree.
Perfect.
Um, you say that you have the, um, six foot rounds.
Yeah.
Do we have high tables? Do we have high top?
We don't have any. Uh, we rent the ones for the fair. We've actually been looking at like trying to make some just out of like two by sixes here. Like, it's been kicking it around with Kelly, but now that the grass is starting to drill.
Yeah.
Uh, but buying those tables, I mean, it's something that may be worth investing in. If we had, you know.
Could we maybe rent some from the convention center for this, just to see how they work?
It's so, I think it was like Old Steds or something that we were renting them from, but we're also going to talk with, um, the loft. And I think the loft might have some that
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's options for renting them. It's just what's the return on investment if we just
Well, I do think, I do think if we are going to be focused on more events, that we do probably need to, you know, yeah, eventually.
It's not a one time. Like, doesn't have, we don't have to pay for it in one time.
So like a, a cheaper decent one is around fifty dollars. A higher end one is in the eighty dollar range.
Probably want to get a little longevity there. So
And some weight so it doesn't
Yeah.
Over and break.
Yeah.
Be able to work in the grass. Having something that you set up in here is one thing, but something that we want to be able to take out to the grass instead of this.
Okay, how are we?
Okay, so, but they're going really well. Um, they're going, they're promoting it for us. I mean, we can promote it too, but they're going to be doing the paid ad. I just need to connect with them again. Um, he, they sent me a message yesterday afternoon about basically connecting it to our page. So it looks like it's us, not them that's, um, doing the promotion.
Yeah.
And so I just need to clear a little time. I've been busy getting ready for this meeting. So I'll circle back on that tomorrow.
If you can send me the list of things that we have scheduled, I can do some Facebook posting.
Our influencer.
Well, I mean, it's not that, but I know how to do it. So you might as well utilize the people on the board that know how to
Sure. Yeah, and we'll have to do everything for Joe Nichols. So we need to set up an event for Joe Nichols and start doing some big advertisements for that.
But posts get more shares and events, like events disappear and nobody ever sees them again.
And then you have to go to your event thingy and then you
You have to find it, yeah.
I actually hate events.
Me too. But I mean, it's great for number counting, but it does get lost very easily.
Uh, okay, still horse stalls. This could be a long conversation, but
Nope. Matt says we only have five minutes.
Five minutes. Already behind.
Isn't our work
Um, and so I did all of these numbers based off a couple of different options. But that was these numbers from this Acker Mason online. Um, these are the prices, current prices from Fishvale Farm. So I'd have to change them, but they're close. They're within a hundred dollars or so.
Yeah.
Um, the big, it's so, some of this changed because I had this twenty-eight stalls in the front of the barn, which that's not the case. It's twenty-eight stalls in the entire barn.
Yeah.
So the number dropped way down just from that. Um, the main big thing to land on is if we want to go to twelve by twelves or twelve by tens in the back of that that barn head.
What are they now, twelve by twelves?
They're ten by ten. And so if we go to a twelve by twelve, um, we'll lose aisle width. Uh, what was it? I had it written in here.
Go down to eight.
Yeah, we go from a twelve, we go from a twelve foot aisle down to an eight foot aisle. We go to twelve by twelve.
I think ten by twelve would be a better option than twelve by twelve.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm, I'm I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it ten by ten, but I'm not a horse guy.
Yeah, there's a lot of horses that are, are big and those ten by tens are not as well for horses to get in out. Some horses are just too crammed in there. You have a sixteen hand horse. It's a nightmare.
Or you lay down, they lay down and then they get.
They get casted and stuck and then there you go.
So we go with a ten by ten, we keep the same aisle width. Um, but we'll lose two stalls, which I think is nominal compared to.
You said they were eight by eight? And what, how much would we lose? Ten by twelve.
We wouldn't lose any because they would stay the same this way, but they would be wider.
So you're thinking of keeping ten by ten in the front and then doing ten by twelve in the back? Is that what you were?
Yeah, that, ten stalls. Go from ten stalls to eight stalls.
Yeah, I think that would be fine in the back.
I wish I had a chart. Actually Sue has a pretty good chart she uses for stall assignments. I wish I had that and then I could show it to you and say, all of these panels.
I'm envisioning it in my. Don't you think that would be better, Melanie?
Yeah, I think so.
How many do you think have it?
Six grand, maybe a little bit.
Do we have any FFA? I wonder.
I don't.
FFA usually doesn't have horses.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, they do. I know they usually don't participate in.
I thought. But normally the FFA don't bring their horses.
And then something to remember is that I think the balance, it's a little over six grand that we've received in donations from Friends of the Fair. That's earmarked for this project. Hey, we couldn't spend it any other way if we wanted to, because it's in an account that says horse stalls.
So what do we need to, need to get rolling on this?
Uh, really, this is the next budget year thing, but if we know that that's the route we're gonna go, we can get the, the contract and everything ready with Fitzgerald. So that July first, we can pull the trigger, but the most important thing is knowing that we've got this plan so that we can tear those out of barn C and be ready for the fair this year. And so we haven't been wanting to tear them out until we know that we're.
We want barn A to be fixed, barn C can have the stalls taken out.
Yeah, so that.
So I, I don't know if anyone wants to look at it, but I have the stalls.
Can we make it an action item?
Listed here.
Not right now.
Yeah, I can bring it back to you guys next meeting, because we have time.
Will you bring it back next meeting then, please, so we can get that done?
Um, and, you know, this is basically planning to have stalls for barn C and upgrade barn A and leave barn.
For now, for this year, maybe next year.
And that'll be less than the seventy K.
Hey, it's better to over budget than to under budget.
So, yeah, now it's just talking about fair planning. There's a lot going on with the fair plans. I have a massive spreadsheet going on and stuff. We've got, um.
Can you send, we send?
I can send it to you. It, it will be a lot of cracking the code for you right now.
It's okay, I mean, I can, I can, I, you believe me.
Something that we're working on. We have a few, um, key things like the buck drought and the mutton busting and the ride truck and stuff locked in. Yeah, we've got a full package, goat roping, longhorns, and mutton busting.
What about the forestry thing? The forestry?
So, yeah, so I have a couple of other things that are high dollar, like talking over ten grand, ten to fifteen grand. That, they're all available, they're ready, they're on the hook, they have, they're not going anywhere else, so we're kind of pending, but I'm working on this forestry deal. They finally called me back today, um, she said their price is three, three thousand bucks a day and so it'd be fifteen K for the week. I said, well, that seems doable, um. And I was asking her about other stuff, but she said, okay, well, I wanted to make sure that that wasn't just gonna be out of the question for you before moving on. She's available as an organizer promoter with the equipment and everything. The thing she's gotta look into is that she can get enough performers to come out.
It's like a, it's like a little logging show in itself and they do it every day, their own co- competitors and stuff. But what if we did it like three days rather than, or you know, like three special days, it might really, yeah. It might draw people in more.
And that was, she was gonna see what was available for her and I said, well, find out when you can and then come back with some options. And then maybe that is some of the options that it's, if she can't get people on Friday and Saturday and we can do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Can you forward that informational thing you sent Callie and I to everybody else so they can take a peek at it, you guys, it's really in our like, what our theme is and, um, kind of what's been missing maybe a lot, a little bit the last couple years.
It does look fun.
So it's like log rolling, power saws, but they have a, um, they have a pole climbing, but she said that's not going to happen. They're gonna be at that competition and there's too much prize money on the line. She knows for sure, but that gives you something.
What if we set some poles and other people could try it?
Maybe, yeah.
I mean, if Pacific Power wants to sponsor us, they could come set some poles.
Oh, touche.
Right? The Warrington City Park when we were little, when I was little, they had a hundred dollar bill on the top of the greased pole.
I never went to Warrington. I, if I knew, I would have been there.
Know that.
Axe throwing, climbing, bucking.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Paintsaw carving, they got log rolling.
They have something like this at State Fair.
Yeah, so that's where it started. I actually reached out to Kim at the State Fair and that group comes out of Florida. And I called them, they said, sorry, we'll hope to read that weekend.
Everything happens on our fair week.
And then, and then Eric got me a contact for this person because he's working to get them at the Spokane Fair. So, and then he had actually talked to him and before he even told me about him and then said, sounds like they're available, here's their number, and then I couldn't get hold of him for days. He said, well, hopefully she just has something going on, like usually when somebody's unresponsive like that, they have something personal happening. And then she called back and said, oh, fantastic. I think it's this gal, it's the one where.
We're really hoping to lock this one in.
Is it like a, like an hour show during each day or something like that, or?
I don't have all the details, but it's gonna be more than an hour. I think it's a couple trips a day.
We're really hoping to get this one in. I think this would be a really.
What I'm hoping for, and this is where it's like, it's all about the budget now, what all can we afford between the end? I'd like to get this, I'd like to get like BMX or motocross type thing. And then, um, you know, some inflatables and that will kind of be like the.
The bulk of it.
So where would the BMX stuff be?
All across the road.
Okay, good.
And I think even this, like this and BMX, and then if we can get some logging equipment from local companies to set out there on display. We could kind of make that whole area out there drawn.
That was really cool.
We also need to pull people over here though, because if the group's all gonna be here, we have to have some stuff here.
Oh, yeah.
Not just come up and then leave.
Well, and we're taking a little chunk out of the corner here too, so with the handicap parking still. There's that piece also. Uh, wait, I got a lot of other little ideas on little stuff if we can get people to help with, like, a speed gun, that was one of the ones that I think would be great if we did a group to do. Like a speed gun, like who can throw baseball the hardest and football the hardest. Um, other stuff I've seen at other festivals, like you, you have the dunk tank type thing, but then I've also seen like the guy up there that's taunting people and you're throwing tomatoes at them. We could get something like that, I think there's. Those should be easy to try to find somebody locally, if it's a game. Something, so there's a lot of little things like that, but I'm trying to lock in those kind of three big pieces that I was talking about.
How are we on food vendors? I know we talked about it last week a little bit, but.
We have a handful of them already, um, we'll send it out to everybody that's been here in the past, it's on our page. Uh, we're really trying to solicit people, uh, you know, and recruit vendors that we can find some of the work that we've been trying to make happen in between everything else. There's a bunch of boxes of stuff from like two thousand fifteen. It's kind of separate from the basement, their crap. Uh, and in those box hats, those vendor applications and lists, they just need to be sorted through. We found some stuff from like two thousand fifteen. Need to pull out like the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty blocks. So, so we're trying to find those people that have been here in the past and we'll reach out to them also.
So like we are trying also to make sure, because I know we had a lot of feedback last year that people were missing out on like the corn dog. Elephant ear, you know, the, the. The noodles, of course, but I don't.
We had a corn dog guy that was just one. Um, and then the elephant ear guy, the, the lemonade guy was doing elephant ears, but I don't think it was very obvious with.
I just think we're missing, last year we were missing the carnival carnival food stand, even though I don't like to eat at them. The big huge.
Candy, the twisted ice, but you, the twisted ice was hard, like they were in the door. And you kind of had to peek in the door to hope for order.
Yeah, sometimes they weren't there.
And it was, there's just not a lot of visibility in there.
I don't know who sent it to them. And I'm planning to meet with. And he said he has like his weightless people that he can pitch me their. But I do know one of the hard parts that we had, that we've had a couple of people ask, do you have rides?
Back this year, tell them we got some really spot on entertainment coming in. We have a forestry theme, we have, you know.
Two nights of concerts.
I think that we are actually have a lot of stuff that's gonna bring people in this year, so that should hopefully bring in our vendors.
I'm hoping, yeah. I, I plan to make some phone calls. We've kind of been giving them time to to find the application and go through the process, but I'll call them and.
Noodle people.
And ask them.
Um, on a different note, does the county have someone? Like an intern or someone that can come sort through the boxes so you guys aren't wasting time? That could at least organize and file like.
I don't think the county does, but we are talking with the college on their intern program, especially since we were having a hard time finding seasonals to use our seasonal budget last year, that we could potentially work with them and get an intern type position that know, know that during the fair, you're going to be doing fair stuff, but um, you know, that monthly enough to prepare, they can help us. That doesn't get us the information now, but we're building this database that we'll have.
This would be nice to sort through some stuff that you guys aren't. It's just a wasting time.
It is, and there's a lot of trash. There's a lot of trash. There's some gold in there, but there's a lot. Yeah, you know, we've got a lot of musicians interested, but they want, like, they want like two grand to play. It's like, I'm not gonna pay you guys two grand. And there's local bands that are begging to come and play and they sound good. And so we'll work with some local bands and fill that out, um. You, the real big one that's just on the top of my, like, needing to move forward between locking in those kind of three key pieces. Is just the sponsorships and the marketing, so that's what I intend to hit hard here over the next two or three weeks. This last month was a very busy month and we'll get into that in a regular meeting on all the stuff that's happened over the last month. There's been a lot of long days and we're getting a lot done and you know, we have this little two or three week period here now before Craft Fest and then it's gonna get open this year, between Craft Fest and Scandinavian Fest and all the graduations and there's a lot on the book. There is not a weekend open between now and like the end of August. I think that cancellation of Gassing Blast is like the only open Saturday on the fairgrounds between now and.
That's good.
That's good. So, just to revisit, you're gonna send them the, the link to this, the link to this so they can check it out on their own time and then you're gonna send, um. Yeah, spreadsheet, please.
Uh, and then I've been working on like a sponsor inventory, like a potential sponsors. I have it listed with who was sponsored last year and then I've seen who sponsored prior year and then just some other ones that are on my mind. I was looking for the list that you had last year, because we sent out to a lot more people that I didn't get on this yet, but I think it's just in my email. But you're just kind of working on hitting them all and see if you want to sponsor.
What about the Tuesday Food Bank and Wildlife Center?
I have that in my sheet for an action item to do, um. But I'm trying to, this has been working on this other stuff and in the meantime, I think you feel like that's something they can, um, be easily sorted out.
We can reach out.
To work on these other things, but I have it on the, on the to-do list of things.
What do you mean action item? We have to vote on it?
No, just.
No, like he has to.
Getting the concert tickets on sale and dealing with the, like, there's just been so many other items that I've had, I was like.
We could definitely reach out like to, um, the Clutzup County Food Bank. We can, one of us can reach out.
Tackle that and get the conversation going.
Okay, I'll do it.
So, uh, one of the other ones I wanted to talk about is ice. Are you guys on board with us selling ice ourselves this year? And I mean, it's really not like a, not meant to be like a profitable thing. It's more to be a service that's available for them so they don't have to make trips to go get ice.
Yeah, I, I think it's great. Who's gonna man it? That's, that's kind of the kicker, like, is it gonna be? So is it gonna be something that, yeah, I know, right? Little pocket every dollar. Anyways.
You know, it could be something that's easy as we park it next to the office. You know, they can only get.
Kristen's gonna have gloves on her, in her back pocket.
Well, they can load their own ice. It's just a matter of, hey, I need five bags, here's twenty bucks and walk away with the ice.
What if they're not friendly though? I'm not using that ice.
Commercial ice company. Like if you're going to Fred Meyer's eating a bag of ice.
That's what they always like, still grosses me out, there's holes in this. But people just freak me out.
Service group to do it and make a donation.
He, yeah, like, I'm curious, what do you mean, like, because we'll have to buy the ice.
Well, we could do any sports athletic department. We could use the theater kids, we could do Juana's, the Rotary.
Now for forestry.
The forestry.
Yeah, so the one place that is the biggest issue for ice is Brew Twenty Two, right?
Well, and it's not, I don't think it's just him, there was a lot of people.
This is gonna save people from having to go, I need to drive my car up there.
He was one of the bigger ones, um, like the other companies that like their drinks are icy, like they're making ice. The, the lemonade guy, he's making ice, that's why he needs so much power. I, I'm not, I can't recall who else it necessarily was. I know the, the chicken club uses a ton of ice also, they're taking most of their ice from here till it's gone.
Yeah, I think it's great. We just figure out how to handle it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's, is there anything else that you all wanna talk about specifically or that you want me to work on specifically? At this point, it's just kind of going through the motions with all of the stuff, the concerts chugging away. Said it's on sale, the big part is getting sponsorships for the concert now, that's like, that's what's gonna balance the, the budget on.
Do we have anybody doing the, the, are we, we're still gonna do the pig roast, right?
Uh, I, I'm planning on it. I haven't done anything with the pig roast. That is a conversation.
Who did that last year?
Andy did it.
Andy Marsh. Oh, they were really good.
We should do a bid, because that's not necessarily something that's a sole service thing, um. But we could do a bid. I think we definitely should only do two, like last year we did three. And he had leftover and he said years passed, they've run out, but I think that that's not necessarily bad because it does take a hit for the other vendors, so you know, the difference between two and three pigs is hundreds of dollars.
We, it probably would have been more attended, it just wasn't really advertised. Like I, it was a fluke that Andy and I heard about it and I was like, oh, let's go, let's go, I wanna go eat. But like, we need to figure out a way to kind of direct.
There is, there is kind of a balance there too, like. You know, we, we need to be careful because we're offering free food, but these people are coming in here. This is how they're making a living for the year, you know, and so, and they're coming to our fair, we want them to have revenue, so if we.
And if they don't, they won't come and say that on our fair for five days.
Yeah, exactly. And so we just need to be careful with, there's, there's a balance is all I'm saying is.
Oh, no, I get that, absolutely. I'm a businesswoman, but.
I think Buck Drought will help with the advertisement.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
We also had a lot of equipment parked up there last year. So it kind of seemed like it was. Stage area. So we need to do a better job of cleaning that up a little bit more in. And I'll get all of our seasonals to not. They can work in the grass, they're, yeah, they're going, they can walk, they're capable. Yeah, so that's all, that's on there, I think. I have, just trying to figure out how to do it for the VIP. The VIP, you kind of do that all as like a one bid to do the big roast, the VIP and the band. Kind of all as a one contract.
Yeah.
Um, but I think, yeah, we would do some kind of request for it, we decided what type of food.
Yeah, the genre of food, the theme.
Yeah.
I think everybody kind of gets sick of barbecue by the time that the. The concert runs around, so every time I've been in the VIP ten is barbecue, I'm like, oh man, I ate at Bubs by Rob's like eighty times. I'm like, but I'm just, I'm just.
Agree, and I, last year I didn't, I couldn't get over there, there was too many things I was running around doing, but I don't think it was an actual meal last year, right?
I didn't even eat.
It was like shish kebabs and.
Yeah, I didn't even. I didn't see it.
This was way funner, sorry, no offense.
Uh, Brittany, do you know what it was? I was running around.
It was like shish kebab meatballs and.
I was in the back with.
Yeah.
Security and all that. Like I had no idea, I didn't need.
Haven't seen our pictures.
Oh, I'll have to find.
I think there were some like cafes or something, like yogurt cafe type thing.
I just know we were trying to set the tents up as they were coming and Sawyer Brown's agent was ticked that we did not have that set up.
Yeah.
Right then and there, so that is something like this year, it's not an option, it has to be set up and ready to go, cause.
I've got that as a note to have more straight, cause we rented that tent that was supposed to be for that and it didn't have any sides. And he's like, you guys never rent sides, like, well, they want sides, so that was where we were scrambling to get something set up that had.
Well, and a lot of the people that were helping were standing around staring at it like it was gonna put itself up.
That's difficult.
It was so frustrating, I was like grabbing.
I intend to have, working beverage, bring their own tent for the beer garden, cause they have all of that stuff. Um, and then we'll tell them for sure they need to be selling card alcohol, they said they need power, so if we get them power, we'll be good, I don't know why.
And water, water would be.
You have to sell water.
The caterer will be having water in the VIP and then we were considering like a hydration station or. Extra vending machines or something up on the other side, or even a vendor that we let set up in there that sells. Maybe encourage Josh maybe to do like some roaming concessions.
That's a great idea.
Be able to sell. We have to have water.
Yeah, and non-alcoholic beverages are actually a really big deal to a lot of people too.
Yeah. And I get the point, like you already have a line that's way deep and you don't want to board and not people not buying alcohol, but we need an option for people.
We do.
To get.
Not everybody.
That'd be cool to do like a baseball deal where you guys got, got guys walking around selling beer. No, no, I said it'd be cool.
That's how they were raking it in at the circus, you know, holy cow.
Stupid sword thing, yeah, and they suckered me right on in with my drink.
You know, like, as far as the whole fair planning, I, I feel like we're in a really good spot, I wish we were a little bit more ahead. Uh, I think we've laid a really good foundation for next year, you know, that doesn't necessarily what we want to hear about this year, but. Next year, we, we've got all these things, like even the sponsorship stuff and the, and the vendor stuff, like it's all ready now.
I think everybody that's on the book needs to be contracted this week.
Yeah.
They're gonna find someplace else, we are a hundred and twenty days.
Four months out.
Like, I'm not kidding, like, not having any vendors contracted is a big deal.
Oh yeah, well, there's, the vendors. Every vendor that's applied is contracted, it's, you know, that's. That's the piece, they have to wanna come, there's a lot of people that have said they're interested. Um, and we've sent them the application, but we haven't seen it, like, we had Brim say they were interested, we sent them the link, we don't have the app yet, but. They see it and they see it at the deadlines, July first.
I always think that when you're trying to r- mingle in, a good follow-up, and I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
But a follow-up is. I'm, I'm not even joking, I forget about really cool events or things or people that want sponsorship from Teaven Brothers. And I appreciate so much when they follow up with me because then it, oh yes, I, you know, I wanna be involved in this.
The sponsorship one, that's part of this, I have a status, so as soon as I reach out, it's, they've been initially contacted, they've second follow-up. They've said it's on average seven contacts before they give it to us.
Um, there are some of the people that I think that we're gonna request sponsorships from, that I think, um. I, I would prefer to request them.
You go.
Okay.
I can.
Or. Somebody else.
Yeah, and I think if we could do, if we could take this list, like we build this inventory and we give it up.
Yeah.
Contacts with these people.
That'd be awesome.
You know, I've created a letter that's like for a. Like you've never been a sponsor here, we're just trying to engage you.
Sure.
I'd need to tailor this to. A di- a company that has already been a sponsor and say, hey, we've appreciated your continuous whatever, but if you have. Some people that you know that we don't have to go through this step with.
Yeah.
Then it saves step and we can move forward, um, so just thinking, we were saying something else just before that. Um, I intend to call some of those keys, ones that we know, like. ML Express, Ribs by Rob, and I'm trying to think of who else, El Montevon. And just touch base with them over the phone, say, are you planning to come around, and so. Like, at least I'm not waiting, if I know that they're going to apply, I can put them on the list and say there's.
And if you know they're not, then we can move on, try to get another.
Find somebody to do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I think ten is like our number for food vendors.
We gotta have not, I think we had a little bit of the, um, his, or Spanish overlap, last year we had quite a bit.
It was, it was more like, um, the rice bowl type stuff.
Really?
Over left, that was the common, I, we only had one Mexican food, but.
What, Trace Bros and then the guy down here.
The Isle of Wolves?
The, no, by the other bowl place was another Mexican restaurant and it was really good and huge burritos.
Oh.
Oh, that.
That's the one that's always here.
Yeah, I can't think of.
There was only two over there, it was Montevon and.
And then them, yeah, but wasn't Trace Bros?
Burger come back.
Burger is signed up, he's here.
There's this right.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel like there's been other people that have been interested, but we're working on putting together. Time, capacity, recruiting. And then there's some people that are just last minute suppliers. The deadline is this day, not till then.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, you know. I'm going to tell you.
Yeah, let me know if you guys have any other input and we'll work on it. Feel like we've got this period here for two weeks or so, that's gonna be our best shot at having. Time to focus without a ton of other stuff. Granted, we gotta do marketing and advertising for the. Um, but getting these other things done, I gotta get them done before we roll, roll into craft test, because once craft test starts, it's gonna be. But we're, we are ahead of where we were last year and everything worked out, so.
We were behind last year, that's not. Like, that's not the standard.
Right, no, I, I would like to have all of this stuff out. The first of the year, you know.
I'd like to have an act booked by October.
Right.
All right.
You've got two minutes.
Um, real quick, I have reached out to Lums regarding their van that we usually use for the band, but they put it on the lot for sale, so. Marla and I are working on to try to come up with something that we can use, if not, I'm gonna probably reach out to Enterprise. And so, cause it's hard to find fifteen passenger van.
So the county has a fleet contract with.
Enterprise, okay.
It's enterprise.
It's the only one in town, so.
I wonder if we did the VIP care, um, and the thing at the same time, if we, you know. Get a quote on both.
We were talking about like a shuttle.
Oh, yeah.
I was thinking like a six person.
I'm thinking just for the band though. Will need. But it's.
So something else that might be an option is, eh, there's this gal that's doing this onward adventures, I think. And she has a bus and she does like.
Party bus.
Such a party bus. Maybe we could get her to do the ground. Maybe we could do.
Well, depends on, and two, you gotta also not, but see what the, it looks like and stuff, because you don't, you're. Transporting professional, I'll tell you what, Trace would probably be one that you would not stick in that party.
Right.
Sawyer Brown's band probably be like, eh, I don't care. It's just, I think it depends on the artist, who you're gonna stick in something like that.
We do the party bus for the VIP shuttle.
Right.
Uh, I'll dive.
You know, right, the rental company would be a good one to start, cause if they, if they do have one, we will get a killer gun right on it.
Well, we, yeah, I don't know if I'm able to call on that or first test, but I think we need to jump on it, right, cause it's. Fifteen passenger vans are hard to get a hold of these days.
Okay, it is six o'clock. Okay, we're gonna call the Tuesday, April second, Fairboard meeting to order. Um, everybody's here, that's good, uh, we need to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Carries, agenda's approved. Public comment. At this time, anyone wishing to address the Fairboard concerning items of interest on or off the agenda may do so. Person addressing the Fairboard will win recognize, give their name and address for the record. All remarks will be addressed to the whole board in limited to three per minute per person. Fairboard members reserve the right to delay any action if required until each such time, if they are fully informed the matter is scheduled as an agenda item. Is there any public comment?
Are you both raising your hand, do we have to do in one night?
Mine's a good one, my name is Julie Sizemore. My address? Seven, two, two, seven, zero, Front Hill Road, Rainier, Oregon, um. Uh, under your business agenda, an item eight, the Fearing Creek, Creek request, I'm assuming that's for the fundraiser, for the barn dance. Um, that has not yet been submitted or approved by the, uh. Forge Association, it was approved last year, we are assuming it will be approved this year, but if you come to this action item and would like to approve it. If you wouldn't mind adding the caveat that it must also be approv- pending approval by the Forge Association.
Are they not here?
No. That would be awesome, and that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, hi. Okay. You had a public comment? All right, uh, we're gonna move right into the consent calendar. So we need to approve the minutes from, uh, March fifth meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March fourth meeting.
I second.
Okay. Carries, that's approved. Oh, oh, yeah, all in favor? Okay, motion carries.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, uh, Bill, Board Member Reports, Mallory, do you have anything that we need to hear from you?
Don't think so.
Nope. Sir?
Nope, I think we're pretty good, have good communication going on, um, we need to get, make sure she's getting in on the loop on the things that. The items that we are working.
Yeah, it sounds like you had some notifications.
Yeah, I feel like I'm like not getting something.
I can't remember what, but one, so that's why I'm so confused, because I'm in like four different, anyway, long story short. We are having good communications, um, and so, yeah, I'm happy.
Maybe if, um, when you get my messages, if you can just say, got it or something, and I can like text you or something, so you know it's coming.
Yeah, I don't know.
If I, then if I am see, I got it from you, like within a day, I can serve back.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay, Brittany?
Um, just excited about the minivan, we need to start working on that for the, the artists, so I can't say.
Nothing.
It's, I don't have anything other than I'm, I'm really excited about getting all the, uh, uh. Handicap parking figured out, I'm looking forward to that being back up here and then having that designated down there also. Um, aside from that, I haven't talked to any logging companies yet, but I plan on talking to, um. Browning and, uh, Night Guard.
Yeah.
And so when that time comes up.
For what?
To get logging equipment across the street.
I think it'd be fantastic if we could run, said some yarders of that hillside queue.
Yeah.
I don't know if they'll be willing to do that or not, but. Be cool.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, moving down to the manager's report.
Yeah, been trying to keep you guys in the loop pretty well with everything we got going on, so I'll try to go with paper, um. We had a lot of events last month and I felt like they were all really well attended, and four show, that one, maybe, I think you had a conflict with another show. But you still had some people here, um, we had Ducks Unlimited banquet, I think that might have been written before the meeting. Um, I think we had a Keen's Nera, no, we had a renewal of vows. And then the circus and the rodeo, say the circus, we, we figured based off of what the bleacher capacity says, that there was eighteen hundred seats in there. The first show was probably eighty percent of that, that was packed in there, and the second show, they were all full and there was people standing.
Yeah.
Granted, they weren't packed to capacity like Sardine, so, I mean, even if you said ninety percent. I think.
That's awesome.
Three thousand people is probably a fair number, or deal with them, said fifteen percent or two thousand, whichever is greater. So I've still got to work with them to try to get them to give me their admission numbers, which would be good for us to know anyways, how many people come to their show.
That I've heard nothing but good things about the circus, everybody's been talking about it and they've been posting pictures and videos.
My daughter went to just.
Yeah, everybody loved it.
There was no controversy, there's no protest, it was, there was a little bit of a mess left after, but it wasn't that bad. Um, but those are things that I think that now we know, and we can put a little bit extra language in our. Uh, rental agreements about cleanup.
The only thing too is like how I called you, is having that gate open, because we had, the second show was coming in. And we're all leaving and then this gate was shut, so you couldn't get out and it was. And there was getting some people frustrated and I was like, Kylie, you need to open that gate.
Yeah, yeah, so that, take care of, you know, the later show was even more packed, and then the weather was pretty crummy late at night. Um, but you couldn't tell inside. Uh, we got all of the heaters fixed and we had them on for the first fill, but it got too hot, we had to turn them off, it was, it was cooking us out. Um.
So there was something wrong with them then?
Yeah, so there's like this cone that has like a grill on the front that looks like a, like a electric stove.
Mm-hmm.
That's like the burns, like the nozzle, they were like completely encrusted with, just stuff, like they probably have never been cleaned. So we took those out and cleaned them all out and they parted up and then.
Awesome, nice, very nice, easy fix.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question about the circus, is there anything that they can offer at the fair? Like, can they put up a big top and do some of the trapeze stuff? Or does it have to be inside the? This?
Um. They, I mean, they can be outside, they're going to Tillamook in April and, uh. They're outside, they're setting up their tent outside, I can ask them, if I had to guess, they're probably booked, cause they said they're on the road for eleven months.
Can we just ask?
But I can ask them. Um, there are a couple of these other groups that I'm working with that. Like have the global death and they have like acrobats and, and still walkers and stuff as part of their, part of their package that they can offer us. It's not, it's not the trapeze and all that, but they do have some of that. Um, they were all cash, we did like fifteen grand in the ATM for the circus, it was crazy. I'm trying to think of what else, I don't know, I know Brittany went, but I don't know if any of you others went.
I wish I would have, but.
Uh, they basically did like, uh, gates opened, they started doing like ride tickets. While everybody funneled in, and they did first half of their show, that's me. First half, and then they did an intermission and they brought out the rides again, and they let people ride elephants and camels and all that again. And then finished the last part of their show and then kicked everybody out in like twenty minutes. Brought people in and they did it all over again, and there was even more people on the second show.
Yes. People want to come out here, people want to.
Yeah, they wanna do events, and that's why I think us not, like promoting. At this last weekend, a lot of people, the only thing I've seen a negative about that is that they wish.
I had no idea about it.
So.
I didn't know about, yeah, I didn't.
We can talk about that, there was really two main issues, one was the, the alcohol beverage, like it's a little gray on, you know. If, if our contractor needs to be doing those events based off of our agreement, so I wasn't necessarily trying to get too much in the. On our side with it and just kind of leaving it as a private event. The other was, they were talking about a capacity of like three hundred people and they were expecting three hundred people, but once we got it all set up, they could have easily had a thousand people in there. Um, they promoted it pretty hard in their community and like, if you got to a Mexican restaurant, you would have seen it.
We should have just at least. Cause it does, it will always come back on the fact that, you know, they're looking at our page to see what's happening here.[1790.91] Um, and like you said, it was really shared in their community, but. Not in ours, so.
People at work in that community knew about it.
Yeah.
So that was, that was encouraging.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
And I really wanna go, so I wanna see it now.
The photographer and I was a little bit curious. I was like, oh gosh, what's this? How this was gonna go down for us. They wanna come back. They wanna do it again in the fall. Like they were trying to get it in August or September to do it again already.
Ooh, really promote it.
Yeah, uh, what was I gonna say? It was interesting to see a, um. Bull riding event with no horses. So like after the guy comes off, there's six dudes out there with lassos. Lasso in this thing up and then they get it tied up and they lift the belt off of it and then they pull to the trailer. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Uh, like where's the horse? But there wouldn't have been no room for horse. It's like a forty foot ring.
I saw the ring and when I saw that, I was like, what is going on? But I was like, listen, it's scary, yeah.
Um. Yeah, there's definitely some stuff to work with on them, you know, you didn't get any, it was in place, the table playing pretty loud, pretty late. They got started late, um. And it left a huge dusty mess and then there's panels and stuff, so there's, we're gonna have to require them to provide some. Bodies, you know, listed, set up and clean up.
Yeah.
Needs to happen. Um. Really, it wasn't, the place wasn't trash. It was just, there was dust everywhere and it wasn't from the bull riding park. It was from their dance afterwards. And they had a stage set up and they had music going the entire time.
I bet that was a hoot.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from Josh. I don't know if he did very well, but he was running. He probably won't wanna run for that again, if I had to guess, but, um, we'll see what he actually ended up with. Yeah, he did, yeah. They didn't? Um, no, I thought they said the health department was coming.
They did.
Taco, like a taco pen. And they had a liquor license and all that, but that's definitely something good to put on our thing. It doesn't necessarily, I didn't specifically tell them they needed a food license. I did tell them they needed a liquor license.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's a good point to make. Um. What was I gonna say? No, I don't know. Uh, I think now that we know what. How it goes, I, I'm more comfortable with being more involved with their event. Um. Like you said, they were talking about three hundred people. I was like, if we started, it's gonna be over capacity and passed out. There was a little communication barrier with, you know, some of the things we had initially said before we got the agreement done. And then we were kind of renegotiating and it was almost canceled and so we got a better idea now.
You know, this one thing that kind of popped into mind, you said you were a little nervous to kind of promote it because of the, our alcohol vendor.
Yeah.
Right? I think that. Even though there's a little gray area on what we want to do with our private events, anything I look like that, I think that we just. Need to stick with our, our contracted alcohol sales vendor.
I can, I agree.
No, I agree fully.
And that way we can just make sure everything is done properly and done right.
Yeah. Definitely something that like to get. More as a policy at some point. Black and white and it's in our agreement. And it's set forward, so. I understand. Uh, let me think, what else? Got the tougher things, rules and responsibilities forms, you know, if you've been, you guys, these packets, you guys have read it and you wanna sign these. HCP, there's some conversation that the county manager's having with the governor's office about like revenue replacement. And they're really focused and I don't understand exactly what he's got going on yet. Um. But trying to figure out how they can use some lodging dollars to replace some of the hit from the. From the HCP and as we're one of the affected people, we would be part of that conversation as well. And so he said he had a meeting at the end of this week, but once they get a little further, they're probably gonna want some input from us. Um, on that, but I think what they're expecting to do is whatever they can sort out. And as far as dollars to the county, they would prorate it to all of the affected people and it would just be proportional based off of what your. Your tip reference was or your turn to loss was. I don't fully understand what they're trying to do yet because I've only heard about it like. You know, a two second update like we're having right now. I don't know all the details, but. Um. Land use, we applied or we did records requests for those prior applications that we had for bill permits. They sent them in yesterday. I haven't had time to read them yet. One of them's like six pages long, but the other two were like thirty or forty pages long. So I need to get a little time to sort through that and come up with our game plan for the board. Um, I know that Courtney talked about some kind of candidate forum. I was hoping she'd be here tonight to talk about that. For the election, uh. But I don't know if any of you guys had any input on that before moving forward with something, but I was gonna reach out to her and see what she had in mind for that again. We don't have many days available, but if it's a week night, we could do something. And then I've been trying to, um, engage with the chamber, went down to the seaside chamber last week. They do a meeting every week though, which is hard to, it's hard to go to a meeting every week, especially in the seaside for me. But that was good. I went in there and broke the, broke the ice for at least the fairgrounds going out there. Um. Yeah, so that's good.
I go, I go to that almost every time, every week. And I do mention that I am with the fairgrounds, so if there are events that we have that you want me to mention, I can do that one in there. Great, because I report for competence for here and for the bank.
Cool, that would help especially like it's, it's a drive to get down there for eight AM. Um.
Courtney just texted me that this college is doing the candidate forum.
Okay.
Oh, she must be online.
She must be on the phone.
Okay. The, uh, the one that I haven't been engaged with much is Ken Beach, so I need to figure out their schedule.
I have that too.
We're members of all of them. Uh, I know the Astoria one, there's a lot of flyers and handbills to get handed out. I didn't see anybody else hand out any flyers at the seaside one. So I don't know if that's normal, if they do or don't.
Yeah.
Um, it'd be great to take stacks of those and, and dish them out.
Yeah, anything you want me to do, um, Ken Beach is still all online, I believe. Um, but I've gone to a couple of theirs. They still do virtual.
Zoom, yeah. Um, and then Kristen scored a pretty good opportunity for the fairgrounds this week. The chamber had a booth at this trade show in Seattle and they weren't able to man it, so they offered to cover her expenses to go and. Help me in the booth, so she's gonna head up there and go to the northwest event show and promote, you know. Our fairgrounds in Clotsop County and the chamber in general, so.
And where's that at?
It's at the Seattle Convention Center. We're giving up staff time for her to go and be part of a good convention, so that's great. Um, yeah, that's my, my report. Well, one little thing that I know we talked about kind of late last year was the parade. And if you guys do wanna be in the parade, um, start planning on how we're gonna make that happen.
What parade?
The Warrenton Parade.
Oh, for, for.
Yeah.
That would be a great opportunity for us.
Welcome to the table, Sarah.
For us to hand out these, uh, Joe Nichols handbills, right? And we just have a bunch of.
With QR codes to buy tickets.
Yeah, exactly. Like, like we have a Mac one there. I don't know if there's a QR code on that one yet because that came straight from them. We'll add.
I know I'm just a hairdresser, but I do, I am pretty smart.
And we'll just dish those out. Yeah, we'll add a QR code for the.
That's a great idea. I love it. Let's do it.
Uh, but our, our.
Um, want to add the QR code and then, um, I can bring them for the next, uh, show chamber and. This is great. I know I have a vendor in seaside that's gonna do pies and stuff.
Cool.
The major, yeah.
Yeah.
Which it's all weird to be on a committee, we just haven't gotten. Any of our volunteers. Yeah.
So, so yeah, he's gonna do, he's definitely do those.
That's my report.
Thank you, Kyle. Alright, we've got, uh, two items on our business agenda. The first one is the Beerman Creek request.
Yeah, it looks like we've got Lori here.
You don't have to sit if you don't want to. You can do whatever you'd like.
So, uh, we did the, uh, barn dance last year. We're hoping to do it again. Um, last year we used the barn, um, and it was kind of hard to dance in a circle around the posts. So we were looking to maybe see if we can get a bigger, um, facility and, uh, work. On a price, because I know fully donating it wouldn't. Maybe not be something that y'all would be interested in doing, but we would, uh, like to use a bigger piece of, our bigger building. Um, and see if we can get anything on the books, uh, to get started going. We had a really big turnout. It was really good for four H, um. They had like a hundred plus people last year. I didn't know if there'd be twenty and it just kept coming.
We went to that with the blast.
Good, I'm, yeah, it was really fun. It was really fun for the kids. Uh, we had a lot, uh, younger group than I kind of expected, which this year we'll plan more for the little ones. Come and, uh, kind of fine tune what we started last year and hopefully make another. Community event for four H.
I have to follow it on Facebook. I really wish I was here, but.
Is it a fundraiser?
Yes, we have a fundraiser for Beerman Creek and, um, we used all of the money to buy our, uh. Our club meals for the fair, so we did all of our group meals together. And then we, uh, I think that's, I covered all of that for the week of fair.
So last year, there was, there was a Kinsenera here at the same time, right?
No. Was it Kinsenera? It was like the night before or like the week before, uh, the Scandinavian fest. I don't think there was anything here. It was pretty quiet.
Okay.
Then it wasn't a Kinsenera.
Yeah, the exhibit hall is, it's booked now until then for Saturdays, so if you did like. Even a Friday could be hard depending on what the events are that are booked. But something that might be worth considering if the floor will be down in there. Wait, what is this? You're talking to end of May?
We're just looking for anything before July fourth, um.
Like the last week of June, the floor will come up in there. So if you do it. Or.
Like right after Skin Fest?
There'd probably be enough room, even if the floor did come up. There'd probably be enough room just on the concrete between the dirt and the. And the bleachers to do it. To do the dancing part of it in there.
They're for kids.
I was actually gonna say, if the weather is nice, the.
Well, they had a lot of the kids rolling down the hill anyways, so.
Would be really good too.
The weather was.
That would be good, I, yeah.
There's plenty of room.
Yeah.
Um.
Either of those options would be really fun.
We'd have to look at, like, if that was what you'd wanna see, like, I don't know if you would necessarily wanna be doing. Barn dance in there the same night that there's a Kinsenera going on here. Be doing it in that building might be do, and the barn might be doable, but it's actually not here. Between now and then.
Can I, can I say something really quick? I just want to make, um, say this upfront that you, we know that you have not gotten approval through. Four H Association yet, so anything that we say here is contingent on what they are saying.
I have it all printed out and ready and I expect that, we did that last year where you earmarked it and upon approval, yeah.
Can I, and this, I'm speaking as my opinion and I'm, I'm sorry, but when we have like, um, youth groups. Approaching us for, for these type of things, we really prefer that the youth actually present or I do. That at least there's one or two youth. I, I understand everybody's busy. I get it, but I'm just in, when it comes to four H, I feel like it's.
I hear you. We're spring break and holidays, sports. We're kind of got thrown on the books tonight. I was like, well, let's.
Let's do it. No, I appreciate it.
The president?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it's Lindsay McCarthy.
Okay, cool.
Um. Yes, my daughter's, uh, you know, at golf and on her way to the softball game and there's a rec on one oh one and.
Yeah.
So it was kind of like.
I'm just saying.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but I get also being on your end of things too, because I have been a four H mom for a very long time and I understand what that's like.
We wanna make the kids do everything. I do not do anything for them.
I don't prefer to either, so.
Yes, yes. Oh, I, I'm glad, there was a lot of turnout. It was a big turnout with a lot of four H groups and it was really kind of a fun. Uh, prequel to fair, uh, everyone got really excited and we even had the McCarthys bring their, uh, rabbits. And had like a little petting zoo and it was really fun.
Yeah.
The rabbits are scary. They bite.
So does.
Yeah.
My, my pigs don't bite. I don't know.
I have one at my house right now.
She is so sweet.
She bites.
She is sweet.
So the, the later in June gets probably more booked.
Lori, do you have a Sunday too, a Sunday?
Yeah, Sundays would be fine. I, I, I think especially for the family events, I'm, I, I'm really open to any of the days that, uh, we can just get in.
Yeah, I think.
You have to go to the calendar.
We're, we're pretty well, like this room is definitely booked every Saturday. Um, it's just what type of event is it that, that's where we would wanna make sure that. That's probably the more important thing and then if you could do it with the floor down, it's gonna be probably your best option. Um, it'd be better for us too, like if you're doing it in there. We found, you know, with this, you know, this bull riding this week, it makes a big mess and it gets dusty with it and it's more cleanup for us. So if we can do it with the floor down, it'll be less cleanup.
Yeah.
And it'd be better for everyone.
Weather depending, obviously, but what if like out there in the grass and then have someone do, you know, I guess. Can't really get concessions or anything in that, like open garage area, but. Oh, and there's a fence there now, huh? I'm trying, I'm trying to think out there in, um, that building up there. Yeah.
Um, why don't we, it sounds like we have a little bit of. Yeah, discussion. I, I mean, if it's something that we would wanna come back in May and, uh, have the kids come talk to you guys again, that's.
I think, I think we definitely wanna do something.
Yeah.
Obviously contingent on getting that approval and all of that. I think it's a matter of trying to figure out where it's gonna fit best.
Yeah.
Uh, but I definitely think it's something that everyone wants to happen and we want.
Well, great, yeah, we had a lot of fun doing it, uh, I think it's something that we need to do with four H and make it a four H, uh, county event.
Yeah.
Um, this is really good.
So maybe Kyle, you could, you could, um, communicate maybe some good spots that you could see if you can find anything.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, cause he's the one in charge of the schedule, so he'd be the best one to.
I think it's just gonna be sitting down and looking at the calendar together.
That was a, wasn't that a weeknight last week, last year?
Right, was it Friday?
Yeah, I think so.
I think I'm thinking of the, like, they still did their prom. I think that was the night that there was a.
You know, actually, Sunday would not be bad at all. I think that's kind of a fun, yeah, a fun day. Saturdays, we also ran into, um, you know, baseball tournaments.
So I think that also brings us back to like whether we would donate or, or not. It probably is gonna be very dependent on what's next, right? And the availability and, I mean. I don't think we can make a, a complete decision tonight.
No, I don't think so either, but like, I'm on, it depends on what space you're, we're really talking about, like for me, if, if it's the outdoor arena. Like, I'm. Um, you know, something like this is gonna be a little different, you know, and, and we're really trying to, um. At least it's kind of my, my opinion is we're, we're trying to kind of push you guys into, uh, finding sponsors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's so much of the community that wants to reach out and, and actually sponsor you guys and so.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I would look into that option.
Yeah, that's definitely something we're gonna be doing, having the kids do, the kids have been working on getting fundraising for other things too, um. We've actually been talking to the seaside chamber for education funding, but, um, they have plans to get some donations for, uh, the overhead this year.
Yeah.
Kind of. We were like, let's go last year and then kind of.
The kids went and did a great presentation at the city of seaside too.
Oh, yes, they did great. Last year they went around to the businesses and we got a lot of donations. We practically got everything donated. And we had quite a good profit from it, uh. So we're excited to try and do the chicken coop and everything this year, because we had like an outdoor grill and maybe just kind of. Get things planned a little bit better than we had it last year, but second year, let's go.
Yeah, I think, well, I think the board's behind you, um, just maybe next, if, if we can, we'll get it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah.
Um, and it, it, I'd love for your, a couple of your kids from your group to come in.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Great, thank y'all so much.
Okay. Uh, moving down to the wishing tree.
Yeah, so this one, I told them that I would talk to you guys. They actually sent this request. Probably almost three months ago. And it says, well, we've got a lot going on right now. We'll, we'll get it on the agenda. Um, and so this is, they wanna do their same. Their same donation. We did some number. their same donation. We did some number crunching and I didn't print it off, um. You know, it is, it is considerable on what we're donating.
Yes.
If you were to put it on paper and be, I don't know, if you recall off the top of your head, if the number was.
He has the exhibit hall for eleven days, set up and then picked up, so a thousand dollars a day.
Didn't they do some storage too?
And then storage and they have it for about twenty five days. But it's in the storage and we're able to book events, smaller events.
Storage in the annex isn't bothering it at all, but.
Eleven days.
Don't really have a problem, like, out of all of them, I think this is one of the greater events because it affects so many people. I think the thing that is most important to me and I know this is, this is just me telling you my opinion and you guys do whatever you want, it's just getting better acknowledgement about what we've provided them. Um, that would be my only thing, I think. You know, there's some stuff like these doors are open in the the coldest time of the year. Our power drill is like double what it is in the other.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there's nothing else that happens in here except for that. That event, so I think those are things that we can be okay with, because especially because it's such a big
It's a community outreach.
Um, but we should, it should be acknowledged that we have some considerable costs and it's a considerable donation that we're giving them and they should acknowledge just on their stuff as being part of it. And then we wanna volunteer and donate to participate as well, we can do that.
I think that this year that maybe a couple board members should try to don't, to volunteer their time within it. And I would really love like to do that and also so we can um maybe also have some pictures and picture updates and stuff of what's going on with it. For our website.
Yeah.
Or for our Facebook or whatever.
My suggestion would maybe be to just, you know, put into the approval, the acknowledgement that this has a value of this much and that we would like to be acknowledged on on your program or whatever.
We don't want them to acknowledge the monetary part, though, just something that we are a partnership with them, cause that's truly what it is. We are a partnership with the wishing tree program. And we'd like to be voiced as that.
Yeah.
Sounds good. We have a motion.
I hate making motions, but I love. Um, I make a motion to approve the donation of the fairground for the annual food drive and toy drive from November fifteenth through December twentieth, uh, which will be eleven days of the main hall. Um, with the contingency that we are listed as a partner in this program, that the Clotset County Fair grounds is a partnership in the wishing tree program and um is that it?
Yeah.
And that's it.
I get motions on the table? We have seconds.
I said it.
Is there any further discussion to clarify things?
Please. I just think that we do definitely need to be like a partnership or something else.
Yeah, that's pretty standard when we're asking for sponsorship, like, they wanna know how they're going to be. How am I gonna be?
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, that sounds good. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You opposed?
Nope.
Here's.
Hey.
All right. Uh, moving on to the financial report. How are we doing, Kyle?
Oh, this is this is the, it's as big as I can get it on that sheet of paper.
I can see it this far.
Even on my um very bottom ones, I can't see it very well.
Uh.
It's good, thank you.
You know, we've just gone through the budget process, so we're, we're doing pretty well, like, we're we're at.
Yeah.
There's the percentage.
Where are we looking here?
Seventy eight percent.
Yes.
Looks like.
What's seventy eight percent?
Sources. We've got seventy eight percent of our income in and we've only spent forty six percent of our expenses.
Oh, I see. For the twenty three, twenty four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're under budget on expenses and we're pretty close in there tracking on our revenue coming in.
That's good. I like being under budget on expenses.
We just went pretty hard into budget. We really haven't had very many expenses since then. It's really just been utilities that we're doing right now.
Cool.
Any specific questions?
Um, I will get a magnifying glass and I will contact you later. Just use your phone camera and then zoom in. I've done that so many times.
Uh, I'm just trying to think of how we can make this larger.
Oh, it's totally fine.
Mine made, mine printed it on portrait.
Oh, yeah. Can you see that?
Barely, but I mean.
Wow. I'm impressed. Actually, like Mallory was saying, on the blue with the white, it's way easier to see that. So maybe with a different color change to make, I don't know. It's hard to see, but we can always look at it later too.
Yeah.
That compacting freaks me out.
Wait, what? This, and to remember that this is for February. So we're gonna start doing this delayed that month, that way he can.
Perfect.
I'm not rushing in to get him some, give you something for a packet before.
I guess.
He can get.
No, that's fine.
And you hear this one, it it last month was busy, like, there was a lot of long days last month, um. I don't want it to be my standard practice to get you the packets the day before and it should be the week before, not the day.
I'll be honest with you, for me, if it's the day before, I'll read it.
Yeah, same.
I'm a week before girl.
Honestly, like Monday before is probably gonna be best for.
I'm reading. Only up there board meeting, I gotta look at.
Okay. Uh, there's no comments on the finance report?
Nope.
Running to the good of your.
Wait.
Mallory?
Nothing.
Nothing. Sarah?
Nope.
Brittany?
Nope.
Anything pretty good to do on it?
She always has something, come on.
I hope there's something. Possibility of a petting zoo.
Petting zoo.
Say that again?
Petting zoo.
Petting zoo?
Oh, at the fair?
Not. Well, the next board meeting.
That would be very good for Joy. Geez.
Is Rhett's Ranch still interested in doing the petting?
I haven't talked to him yet, but I will call him. He's on my list to call him. I know when I talked to him last year, it sounded like he was really wanting to do it. I just need to make that. And then if that doesn't work through, then I'm sure the twenty farms folks will be willing to do it again. I mean, it was something.
Where were they last year?
They were buying the chicken coop.
My next thing is, can you send us a this stuff, everything that we're having, like, that's on the calendar of events we're having?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I didn't know if having that thing comes Saturday.
Neither did I.
Yeah.
The goal.
The goal thingy, yeah.
Is that, is there, is there like a live document, kind of like a Google Doc that you could share with us? Uh. We can just see, we can just make us viewers so we don't screw anything up and.
I thought that a calendar that we had gotten at the original part of the year, don't count we put it in there, like events in there?
The rolling calendar, like the.
The one that we got the the link to? The Google Calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
With his chicken.
Uh, yeah, I can, there's a couple of ways that I can share with people. Uh, it was, I know that's it's not probably the most user friendly, but it's on our page. It was definitely, it was posted on our event calendar. Um, but again, that one, it was just this figuring out the partnership with them that we were apprehensive about, but I can, we will definitely work on doing that event better in the future. I can send you, I can send you. Your ultimate goal is to get it on our website so that those events are posted so that when people wanna call and get rentals, there is there. They don't have to call me and ask if the date's open or not.
Have it listed, private event, or exactly what the event is.
Back when Gary Friedman was here, there was a calendar like that, cause you could look at it and it was a private event or it would say what was happening.
Yeah.
That was back when Gary Friedman was here, but I would look at it all the time. I'm like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Try to go weekends and you could see exactly, and it would say hall or arena or whatever, but it it, and anybody could go look at it.
Yeah.
I kind of like the idea of us having an idea of what is going on because um if I, I am a calendar freak and I usually link my calendars to my phone and I like to know what's going on here, just in case I wanna come, yeah.
Someone asks you, you don't look at it and you go, huh, what's going on?
Yeah.
Aren't you on the fairboard? And I'm like.
I literally got that comment today about the event on Saturday.
Yeah, I know.
And I do get that. This was a little.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a lot of um there was a lot of circumstances that kept us from promoting it like we would have wanted to. And even the circus one, we were, we were kind of on the edge, cause the last thing I wanted was us to do a bunch of circus.
Well, we can't be having events nobody knows about.
Yeah. And we can't exclude people from events either, so.
Don't, don't touch me.
No, I didn't.
I'm not kidding. We can't be having events that we're afraid to market. That is not the point of having events.
Well, and the thing with like the circus is that they sent me, I got three envelopes full of three kids' things. So I had. They did, and I had them sat at Dairy Queen by other registers and people would be like, oh, there's circus. And so I was promoting at Dairy Queen. It had nothing to do with us, but they promoted and I was handing out those free circus tickets left and right and people were taking handles.